Any additions or violations to the agenda? Do you have any? I have approval.
So move, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? No delegations or presentations tonight. Minutes in the previous meeting, July the seventeenth. Everybody's written those over? Any errors or omissions? If not, can we have motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes? None? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any needs? No business arising from the minutes, your own business. So we'll roll right into the C A O report. Okay, so. In the planning department, there were three development permits issued. And two subdivision applications were approved. Building department, there were four building permits issued. Fire inspections. There were fire inspections at one sixty-three First Avenue and one oh-one Water Street. And both had deficiencies planned and they have thirty days to remediate. Eighty-five Warwick and ninety-three Warwick with follow-up inspections and no deficiencies planned, so that's correct. Fire department responded to thirteen calls during the previous month. One, one attended fire for alarm soundings, one rescued. Child was locked in a room. One vehicle fire, one bloody basement, one structure fire, one boat fire, three boat vehicles. That took ten calls, nine in district calls for it. The V I C Shore Road. During the middle of July, the weather was clear, permitting tourists and tour activities. The Dique area trails and my notes of brochure map was useful and particularly appreciated by tourists looking for heaven and walking spots. Many tourists made comments about how great the map is. And helped them gain a better understanding of Dique mechanics as well as the other surrounding areas. Because the popularity of these maps of V I C has gone through them fast and may need to request more. The visitor information center was, has received more travel material such as brochures, art exhibits, and galleries, and hidden in the Napa Valley historical site guides. Owners of accommodations in the general area have stopped in to request for trail maps and Dique area books. Visitors have come from Germany, Switzerland, Ireland, England, and several states in the United States. Most commonly, Maine, Massachusetts, Virginia, and the most Canadian, of the Canadian provinces, but most prominently from Ontario and Quebec. Driving in R Vs vehicles or on motorbikes and bicycles. Scarlet Days was held August tenth to thirteenth. And it brought in a good number of visitors, some of which were not aware of the festival, but were pleasantly surprised. Staff also learned that visitors from hellbacks came down to see and participate in Scarlet Day festivities. The visitor count from July fourteenth to August seventeenth was fourteen hundred and sixty.
Is that up or down from last year?
Yeah, last year.
It's down?
It is down.
Last year?
But is it, are these fourteen hundred more truly people using the V I C? Because that's staffs and they give public washrooms. Most a lot of people come in from Washington, but they haven't saw the guestbook. I wouldn't be that's. Sorry to say. And this is, is that the V I C? We also have like the leadership.
Yeah.
Girls, two, two girls that have been going around and talking to people and stuff, and also taking stats to prove it's not good and stuff. So their numbers are going to be combined when we do our report, we'll combine the two numbers. So, but I think combined, we're still down a little bit, but. Well, the tourists, uh, C T V news has gotten Kate Britton, Kate Britton, so. And helltax is not Kate Britton. But first, fires and floods and everything else, I would turn it.
Press the gas pedal.
Press the gas pedal. Okay, fifty-three Matt Street, Food Bank, so the four response sent to the Food Bank. It included council decision on the random map and the amended agreement. So as an update, we were left on the regular report. And had to achieve any response, but on Friday afternoon, first check, red check arrived. So for office. But, no. They still have to sign the agreement. Won't take the money anyway. And property listings, there have not been any offers on, on Third Avenue. Uh, housing acceleration fund, application. Town D P's application to the A J F has been completed and submitted by the New Commons Group on behalf of the town D P. Young, the outstanding items, an application is the council approval resolution that approves the town's action plan. Let's cover the other two. Service exchange, regional engagement via Zoom and Department of, with Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing. On Thursday, August twenty-fourth, council staff have been invited to attend following session. Say Shore, Say West at Nova at nine A M to ten thirty P M. And it's uh, Zoom. So I think everybody, when I last rescinded, Calvin. Right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take the minutes.
Yeah. And I think N S F M sent, sent it every dollar.
They did, yeah, same. Having these regional meetings instead of.
Uh, fifty-three Matt Street, the housing project. We, I received a report from the town with the town D P for the housing conversion to the upper floor of fifty-three Matt Street. Prepared by Gerst Architects. The town owns the building, located at fifty-three Matt Street, built and renovated and contracted as a school. It is subsequently being used as school board offices, adult learning, and Salvation Army, Fresh Shore. Currently, it's upstairs vacant and a lower level is occupied by the D P's area Food Bank and the Brown Society. Town D P has commissioned Gerst and and associates, architects of Gerst Architects. And to assess the viability, have converted into the upper lower level into affordable apartments. Town abbreviated the preferences for bachelor or one living apartments with individual metering. The third, clientele will be older, single or married couples or younger than, which are their families. Estimated budget for the conversion is on the following page. It's basically with several is almost one point four million for the conversion. Town also requested a cost for new build. The new build is constructed, could be designed to meet an upstairs housing recommended size for bachelor units. This is four hundred and fifty square feet by six. It's a twenty-nine seventy square feet of gross building area. Recently completed three thousand square foot small options home, which costs three hundred dollars plus or minus a square foot. Using this this cost for sprinkled, not our estimate, cost as it's called, is one point two five million, which includes ten, that continues to be ten percent for soft costing, fifty percent of H S D. So the whole V T L report is on the cloud. The sense of saying. Between the old and the new.
Yeah.
I guess the only difference is, is the new would, I was approved, I put it. So we end up with a new building for housing, but we still have the old building. But the upper level, or something that we have to do something with, if we have a mansion. Just doesn't seem to go away. Yeah. Any questions on that?
No.
So we, we, we're going to discuss it. And decaying of business, so. Did everybody see the report? Okay. Mike? Director of Public Works.
Okay, so. Been doing a lot of work on the Matt Street project with the engineers. Um, also been involved in the tri- hand school boards, the tri-hand school board. Process, just because they're going to lose, lose Matt Street for school for many months of school year. So. I don't have any really big, and I guess I want to talk to the main home, so everybody's aware. Axles are on, tires are on, cones on, ramp is ready. And I talked to him today and as long as the weather stays good, he's done for tomorrow. Then the back D P on Wednesday or Thursday. So hopefully, when I say Thursday, Friday, I have it up the place. So, so everybody's aware. Uh, the downtown bathrooms, Keith piled floors in the bathrooms. We're just waiting for packs to come, for the trim on the doors, so we can pile the walls. So there is still a chance that we can have at least one of them operations for walk around. Hopefully both of them, so we're pressured on the mall to get it done, so.
I had a call, I was telling Tom, I had a call from a couple that visit, but that D P I, D P, the D P is just as pretty as the rest of them. But he was in St. John, he got hurry, he said, you have one problem. And I said, what's that? You don't have public washrooms. He said, well, that's being addressed now. He said, I'm an old guy, so I can't walk very far, so. And, but I did tell him that we had a couple going, so it's down low and all that stuff. I asked him to send a letter.
I think there's, there's no loss of positive feedback by the time, so. We did the jam, it didn't matter what you do, but I think there's a loss of positive feedback, so.
Yeah, just back to the main home, when you put it there, you've got to decorate, plant it up over there.
Oh, yeah, I always want to get it there first.
Yeah.
So, yeah, oh, yeah, no, it'll be all landscaped and two little decks on it. It's going to feel a little peaceful around it, so it's a, that kind of definitely, we've lost a little bit, so. I think everybody's seen that the bandstand, I mean, walkers completely. So that job's completely finished now. Um, the other project I'm working on with engineers is the Shore Road Culver, the one that's collapsing, so that we can get a tender, get a design done, ready for tender. Um, fifty-three Matt, pump set been installed downstairs of the building, so it's three, three individual units. Two in the food bank and then one in the other room. Um, for personnels, we have, we still have one employee that's on the D C D. And he gets back for three days a week. Last week, three days, this week coming. And as long as everything goes okay, then he's likely back forty hours a week, two weeks, and then he'll be back for full time. So if everything stays the way it is. Of course, I had fifty-three Matt on here, which Tom's already discussed. So the other item, just wanted to talk about was, uh, they released something more to start, smart birth downtown. The first one that he's going to do, I talked to Tom, the mayor, about this, was down the bandstand, I did a picture of the bandstand, the old bandstand. So that's going to face the bandstand side. So, kind of gave an idea of what council's thinking for the other side of the bandstand. What they'd like, his plan is to come and stay, do all three, and D P can tell them. So I'd like to know what it looked like on the other side of the band, the other side of the bathroom of the bandstand. And discussion with, with the mayor, all Tom's implications, and we refreshed Tom over when he came back, was the other bathroom, it's county or district center of town, you want to call it that, so we have all the events, you have a lot of children down there too. So we wondered if the mayor thought, I think, it was a good idea, and you suck for families, and suck for children, maybe more, not saying it has to be cartoons, but just something, something different. Instead of just like a memory of the past, but something, that somebody's going to stand beside and take a picture. I'm sure they're going to take pictures of the other one too. But just, you know, we do have a lot of, we're a forest town, we have a lot of kids here. And I, I'd like to see us do something for them, which is the recommendation that I made.
Fun.
Yeah.
For kid fans. I like the idea of the bandstand there, but it means more to us locally than it does to tourists. But it gives them an idea of what that area did look like. Something fun, you know, like you said, kids leaning up against it. You said he did a.
Oh, like he, he showed us some amazing pictures, Leslie was there.
Yeah.
And he showed us one of the hall that he did. And he started with a black background, then he painted all the brickwork on it, then he painted the hall in the middle of it. And it looked like literally the hall was coming right at you in the picture that he showed us. And you see the door running out with the moats and everything, it was really cool. And he showed us another one, it was just, just a windowsill, but it looked like it was overlooking the ocean. And it looked like an actual windowsill, totally true D. And he made a comment, and somebody actually was in a bar, actually set the cup on it and it fell on the floor. It was, it was really cool. So I, you know, gave me goosebumps, the stuff he was saying. Like Leslie just, Leslie was amazed at the stuff he was showing us, so.
Do you want a rocket in charge?
I don't know. Hopefully, building might fall down.
There's no mention anywhere, or Tupperware. And there's no mention anywhere in town of Tupperware. No Tupperware, D P probably wouldn't exist through the nineteen thirties. It's a lot, I think, of going.
Yeah, he had the big mill set there. He built, assembled defiant trucks. Bunch of boxes.
Yeah. I have some, I have some of them old. Yeah, we have a lot of buildings.
Read into history, I think, we actually had a problem with that, they, power rates, they were charging the, they powered it, you know, the town came on. But he had ships that sailed the world, took lumber to the western east and it was, and brought back diamonds, had some steam power plant, and that's what. Or seven of the town was electrified by itself. That's very cool.
You, you bring it up, you probably some pictures.
Yeah. See a warm block down here on one. Four thirty, but it's, it's, it's.
The, the other one I thought of is the Great Fire of eighteen ninety-nine, side of that maybe. We have photographs of that, all taken from where Roger Marsall, four years ago. I have photographs and I dug up the other day, I shouldn't. The center of town was burnt, both sides ripped down before he hit us, and someone first happened. That's, you know, for a history part of it, you put in the Great Fire of eighteen ninety-nine.
So if you think about the scene, imagine this, okay, so you know the building right behind the wall, so, yes, that would be your shooting's mansion. Have all of them against each other. And this, who here to?
There's a party there, yeah.
Yeah, there's a big party there, right? So that's where all the town council was. Train was coming into town, it was snowstorm, it got stuck right here. So the fire car, the fire started flooding it downtown. So they had all the way around the other end of the town, but the town they had organized, that's why they fired cotton, which is an officer, because they got all the, there was so much smoke, they had all that around the city.
I'll send you that, get the whole story. Something, find my picture.
Yeah, so think about eating pizza, mad trash. I think that's cool. So, this is what Mayor Leslie went talking about. Just something different. I should have printed off, I didn't want to show there. Doesn't have to be that, just, just kind of give you an idea. Some, some, you know. You, I bet you like, you like the end, but he did a pretty amazing prank, so, just.
That's for the kid, right?
Yep. Got the anchor. I don't think we should, because that was, it's way unawful, Tom. So, but. But whatever, whatever council thinks, I just, just wanted to give some ideas, but. We're, we're having some direction soon, because we're starting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Could you do like a small effort too? Probably could.
Yeah.
And it's probably just. Just got to give you something, this is, this is kind of what we're looking at, so.
I did tell some tourists the other day, when you chuck in the skull, be careful, because they clamp down with their teeth and take your fingers off. Maybe you could do something. I had them do the wiser eight bag.
So just, just, I just thought something fun would come.
Yeah. It's about the lobster. Of course, there are, I mean, something with whales or something, ties it maybe with modern whales.
Whatever.
So he's here in the world to start the first one.
Yeah.
When we'll be here to do the last one. So you need to know by Wednesday morning, ladies. Wednesday morning, ladies. So your ideas, and if you get a dozen ideas, then you guys pick.
So we got a checklist of pictures on top of.
Yeah. Roll back.
From all the cars that we, George.
If you did, a series at the start, it was the old, so you did, the old, most of us, you know.
If you do that, you need something there saying what. Yeah, because they're just old buildings, so.
Yeah.
Tourists come and look at it and say, well, that's great.
There is a nice picture of the, that can look special, with all the vines on it and stuff on it and everything.
Yeah, so Wednesday morning, you know, ladies.
Soon, soon and punctum, they dissolve, sort of off, certain stuff. Maybe, and, and else has to look to look, and then we can add it, we can scan, gone, where they set it off, and then they go pick one or seven or whatever they, they let us up, right?
Perfect, you give them up, put them in a hat.
And I'll keep it.
Southwestern. Okay, anything else, Greg?
Nothing, this director finance. So the report is there, uh, statement of operations for the four months ended July thirty-first is, is in. It's hard to tell much at this point in time, but, uh, nothing that I haven't already reported to you is as hot though, it's as varied as, so, no, it'll be scarce coming our way. Uh, church street upgrade, P cap grant, so we applied for a grant, uh, I won't read this, but basically we applied for the amount for whole design. And we said, failing that, at least give us enough for pre-design. And of course, they gave us enough for pre-design. I phoned before I put the application in, hoping, you know, what's the best, where you get money, and I think that was the best option. Pre-design is good, they're going to give us fourteen thousand, or that's fifty percent, so spend twenty-eight thousand, pre-design done, that gives us the dollars, the estimates, and we can get a application for a big, big grant, so. King Street, which is next most important, I have to know. We did get the full design, this is just to remind you, uh, we need your half, twenty-six thousand nine hundred, that's just fifty percent of the bills. Disaster financial assistance, should probably, since the major rainstorms, uh, probably be a number, we just leave it for, we didn't, we were fortunate, didn't have anything, so no application bid. Uh, the housing net operating loss, so that's the annual amount that we have to pay towards public housing. Um, there's some good and bad news there. Uh, the, uh, first part of the bad news is the bill for twenty-two, twenty-three finally came in at a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, we had hoped it would be approximately eighty thousand, uh, so it came in higher than expected. And the twenty-three, twenty-four year run right now, the estimate has come out, and they're saying between a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That's well above anything you've ever seen in the past. But as you've already been reporting, any information from the N S F M, and I think our first thing to find it for uh, the province is saying, the service exchange agreement, it looks like they will be taking more housing corrections, which is another of things. But we don't know for sure which year they're referring to. So maybe we paid our last housing bill, maybe we haven't. So you can get better, unless you've heard anything, Tom, meantime, uh, we have a direct indication.
I had a call, well, regarding the meeting, but the, was to make sure that at least the mayor's ward is on, because Kate Britton doesn't want to have this, this past. They're saying, we're not getting what we want, so we want to turn down the proposal presented by government, we're on housing justice, so.
And we understand it was a joint, uh, committee that were directed, nations, the government did not accept all their information, the, this board. Um, one of the ones being the housing foundation, uh, for fifty thousand dollars in our equalization, it's called Town's Foundation. Uh, the information we've seen, that's going to go away in five years. So although our equalization is going to go up by about twenty-four thousand, so the next five years, we're going to do good, well, we're a winner, winners and losers in this service exchange. But after five years, that will go away, that fifty thousand. That loser on equalization.
But don't forget, that's, they promised that, or it took away from us.
Yeah, so, yes, we all, those of us that have been here long enough, uh, remember housing and corrections being promised, it's going away, and then the letter, the lead letter came, and I passed.
Yeah.
Wasn't that. Uh, small change in charts on the Shore Road building, uh, that's the new V I C, uh, of course, it's talking by now, so those two replacements that are in this, in the bigger period. Act of transportation, um, we had a meeting with Trace Consulting, and that resulted in a meeting, meeting scheduled for September eleventh, uh, with, with the council. Um, now, that's to update council on where they are, what's going to be, what's going to go to the public consultation session. And public consultation session has yet to have a date set, although I was hoping, I was promised we would have one by now, um, still, still don't have one. Because we want to get it in enough time to advertise, uh, as, uh, mentioned what was upcoming on social media, trying to be very, very positive comment, of course, I have beaten up for it, but that was better than nothing. We try and see how we can get the information as soon as we can.
Right, you know, what kind of meeting that would be, so.
What is that?
You know what kind of meeting that would be.
Yeah, we're hoping that transportation public consultation doesn't get overtaken by conspiracy theories, so. The last one.
That would be, so.
Are me?
That would be, Tom, I already had comments.
It's a shame, because this is a chance to positive influence on where, where do you want your millions of dollars, put in your construction in future? What, just get rid of sidewalks, you want wider sidewalks, you want your cyclists, you want the trails better, I mean, not worth the money. This is the chance for, for people to say what, what they want. So, uh, nice to have some. I, I guess the advice I would give is, tell as many people you can, the more people I need to get told, the more chance we have of having representative group of people here, rather than a, a poor group of people that think it's a conspiracy, uh, to take the orders.
Any questions, your colleagues?
Might as well keep that up so I don't see you, you're talking to your, I think, you might want it four and a half, I believe, though.
They're not getting what they feel is enough. So I had a call from the mayor the other day saying, make sure you attend this meeting. They're not getting what they feel is enough, so I had a call from the mayor the other day saying, make sure you have this meeting, because Cambridge does not want to accept. And the communities in Southwest know this, it was better than nothing, so, so take it and then continue working on improvements, Cambridge is saying, no, they don't accept, so. Yeah. Special constable.
Summary on the, uh, who's gonna say, leave, we, same doors, we're in the meetings of property owner, we'll resign consideration, we'll return to the fire. Look, special, the third largest, business water, great, one blood, twenty fifth, I had sent them an email, request, uh, start faith for the property owners in society. Since this is the fourth, um, they have started work on the building, on the full heat. One forty five West Street, the property is under a major cleanup, removing excess police garage and lawn grass from the building. Um, the degree of that has also been removed, scanning water, shit has also been resolved, and just waiting to verify contract and pest control. And that's small damage to the building, the property. Once this has been done, the owner will have the methods requirements. Eighty nine Sydney Street, inspected the area, there's all under daily hands, like we, did volume of waste, kind of type of waste present. The owner, I'm currently investigating to verify the, the security of the disability, before I decide on what's vacuuming for. Sixty eight Church Street, we see the complaint concerning water entering the third property, from leaving residents, um, there's some mix, mix and loads of renovation goals assured that the water can enter into the air, and so we're notified that they said, and it's all. Fifty three Sydney Street, we see the complaint concerning the air, that had not been cut, but still, we're going to, we're investigating, and we're not intending to call the owner to inform them, and they came to cut the grass, um, obviously, of course. Any questions, your colleagues?
Just have a concern with your wording, investigation about their disability. Because we're not at all, we're not at all.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody tells me that they have no ability to so much as clean up their area, and I see them doing work for other people.
Yeah.
That's the kind of investigation, I am not a doctor, you're correct, I will not say anything on somebody's health plan. But if they're trying to tell me they cannot physically pick up anything, they cannot physically do anything, and I see that physically loading material here for somebody else that's employed in town, I have a question. Just because I'm trying to work within the best I can, so, I just, for that, but I, I am trying to, you know, you know.
What about two, frankly, and two? You say you're just, very, paint that, uh.
Oh, sorry, I think it was one we were talking about there.
Uh, I mean, busy in this project. But, uh, this is almost the end of this, and, uh.
I can rattle the chain again, I guess for me, I was just focusing on other more dangerous and dangerous, um, buildings that kind of fell and for, uh, matters of focus a little bit more than that, I'll say that aesthetics aren't important, but in another one of their properties, for instance, it was helping make it better, so I tried to kind of focus on those.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
Skin a little bit of that, is it?
Suggestion was better.
Um, and, so the protective services report, C C D D, three cameras found, so then my corporate work performance maintenance, overdoing last of the three hours, and we were sort of an issue. We had attempted breaking in the town hall, the capital, and the mischief was suspected by the R C P after shooting, and we never made it. An additional camera for the front entrance area is recommended, just because if an incident happens in the front entrance area, it's not passed down down. And security, that's more than just supported anything that happens there. Um, parking control, eighty percent of the people receiving tickets are always telling me that you don't see a parking sign, it's a new sign, last week we considered. Was questioned that the forecast surrounding difficulty locating the town parking by law, and it's recommended to me to post one on the town website. V I C overnight parking, it can't be, it's pretty current control, it's time to prevent overnight use of V I C, I recommend an R C P monitor after hours. Or install the gate because at the end of the day, since a lot of times the people are on the floor, or are on duty. Well, when I show up, they tell me they have just landed there, and there's not any visual evidence to support the fact that they don't have.
Can't see.
I don't have nothing to prove it, can't, can't firm the paper, can't go to the data. Um, kind of limited as far as supporting that, um, civic addresses, at the time was reported, there was nothing to report. Dog control, there's been a report of two, two dogs, a large, it's shell bred, the baby, I know that's not typically my area that I cover, but we dealt control. Person was on vacation at the time, they were in the milk, well. Um, also received a complaint of a dog attack on West Street, the complaint was due to an attack by a baby on us, and we mailed. Spoke to the owner for the dog, remind that the dog, he was pierced and had large, when it was put down, gave him a copy of the bylaw. And additionally, I received an explanation from the Department of Justice surrounding con use, random protection. Copy is getting, to discuss, and in essence, I need to write a policy that the government needs to respond, it can't just be, be stored in high area, that's how the policy is placed. Asking approved by the Department of Justice, make sure that, you know, um, protocol, make it, it's coordinated to be followed, any disciplinary actions to be followed, in case something right, that sort of thing, so there has to be a little bit more paperwork involved, and so it's simply, we do them, we do them. Crossinger, it's work with the museum in September, vending license, I issued two vending license, a deal license that was fine. Taxi license, there was one in taxi cab, and I can't refuse. Um, census, Richard, my upper scheme was, where document for the taxi cab, I'm sending you guys that sheet across, but read it.
We're gonna, it, we're gonna add that to correspond, serious, but it didn't, uh, you didn't listen to it, so.
Um, against the documents, and, hold up a little bit, so, why they're looking to possibly have a cap on that, number of passes, person, and they get him a specific, but, and. And we, you know, document, multiple sector check, which brought my attention to the R C P attachment, which is a little bit of information that was missing, like, check boxes, as to whether I can pick vulnerable sector or criminal. Simple things, simple, simple adjustment. Solid waste management, municipal housing, probably follow these bylaws, and send a title to section to support my concerns, surrounding solidities in town. Discuss the bylaw, and we can lead, and sense them, and receive support from, um, municipal housing, stating that any time there's an issue, please reach it down, and they'll try to address the, 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 themselves, and so far, I think it's starting to work, we're starting to build the communication, we're doing things in time. King Street lot fourteen fifteen, still waiting on that to be clear. And of course, round forty five, it's an engine, just kind of, I mean, clean up. Sixty two Prince Lee Street, inspected the property, found, related to the result of purification here, and accessways and stuff, and it's closed. And then, King Street, that's in fifteen, that's the name of it. Seventy seven First Avenue, received a complaint concerning smaller, different solid waste collection bin, spoke to the property manager, and he said, the area resulted in issue. One ninety King Street, received a complaint concerning a green bended, and not been emptied, um, gave them the last final warning, and remind them the next time, we need a hundred fifty five hundred dollar fine, depending on violation. Bylaw violations for King Street, um, lot fourteen fifteen, and for that West Street, which is the West Street, eighty nine Sydney Street. There's also mention of the noise bylaw, complaint, resident coming from downtown at the Cayman area, um, spoke to the complaint, and they notified them that, I mean, the complaint is being investigated, and we're seeing things implemented to try to control, monitor the sound of the noise, and the door. And we fed a complaint regarding outdoor fires in the town, we did. Now, do, do the area that the person filed with complaint from, it made it difficult for me to go and investigate that without having the, the complaint. So I didn't know if it was a way to be just a general, uh, maybe a public post or something, just like a friendly reminder, just people to be mindful, and maybe you have an indoor fire, and I'm seeing
And spoke at the beginning, the rest of the night was also.
So something like that, the public post person, you know, he owns that direct area and. He's lived there a couple of times.
Yeah.
I don't wanna make like targets in our area. And there are problems with me, you know, the mining area things etcetera. There's a lot of factors that can contribute to this, but. Nonetheless, public posts may be a safety, big deal, but this would be good in that area.
Any questions? Well, you had a busy month.
The next month's a little bit more ring back, but we'll see how it goes.
Oh, you got the rally coming, so.
Thank you.
Must be a problem storm same weekend, so.
Sounds bad all the time. As far as, as far as the taxi cab though, you guys hold three thousand.
We're gonna discuss that.
I'm sure that I got an extra tax rate while we get correspondence, maybe community gardens, and we're gonna discuss a letter from the taxi.
Yeah. So we have a letter here from, uh, Community Gardens. And, uh, looking for us to sponsor half the cost of apartments. Uh, Biggie Elementary School Fire Garden. Where is that? Is that to the side of it?
I think so. They just re-kept all the burns over there.
Oh, really? What are your thoughts? Right now we paid for the full cost, so half cost is a good deal, eh? The best stock normally would be both ones, so.
They're like, they're four hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah.
We use it with students at this school. We, we wear it quite a bit last, last year. The spring, summer, so.
Did you have the community grants discussion? Was that what we get? When we get a grant next year.
Well, yeah, it's, it's probably, it's late in season though, but maybe, yeah, that's. Are they, they're still applying for grants, is that?
Yeah, sure they are.
Do you have any plans for putting in more batches or anywhere in town with you?
We're getting benched over.
We're getting benched over, but I'm gonna throw it there. Do you know who the union wanted you? Or the other half of them?
No, I don't know that.
I think it's probably after like, if you should do it with its own half prevention. You could basically probably receive. Just putting it out there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's a good spell. Oh, the other half of you is spelled? Okay, well, ours is two hundred dollars, so.
Eighty twenty.
Unless they have this one.
This would be so much higher than yours and Jeff's. Oh, they just, they have one number, Jeff and my uncle don't do it. Now, what? So you think you'll have room in your budget?
It's half.
Half?
Yeah, it's half. Fourth line, hundred back of the thing, so that is why it's four fifty. Then you wouldn't have to take it from anywhere, because the money's already there, and we have to spend it somewhere. It's just from the.
Yeah, no, if you think you can squeeze it out of your budget, then we.
Yeah, I'll just hold on, I didn't know it was gonna happen.
Okay. Well, if they, they're probably up there, so. Yeah. Do you just want directions in? Or well, I'm, we're gonna spend, should have a motion that, uh, commits the district to say things. Yeah.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to do the four hundred fifty.
So just the commitment of the district or just? Well, it's all gonna be a bench, it may be four fifty, so they have to do it. Anybody wanna second that for discussion?
Oh, sir.
So would this be one of those, uh, statements, we have that, that, the policy?
I'm assuming that's what they price, I'm not sure. So there's a link on, uh, there's a link around the flyer.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Very similar.
I think it's three, three cents. A lot of high percentage of. Jared asked. Five, five percent. Yeah, same issue. Cause those green ones are actually cheaper.
All right. Any other comments? If the district doesn't go through with the money, then they're not gonna, you know, come to us or something.
School board.
Alright, the school board, yeah, well, school. All those in favor of that, we should say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is, uh, correspondence, um, taxi operators in town, they're looking to add ten cabs. So we asked for, uh, a letter to justify the request. It's, uh, you know, now we're asking government to visit, so we need to have good reasons for doing that, and we got your letter here. Uh, everybody read this letter, seen it? Got any comments on it? I just, I have just a couple of things that come out of this is, uh, and I read it. Is there cooperation amongst the taxi companies to make sure the town is covered?
Yes.
Yeah, because I did have to actually go, uh, I had a call from somebody, Health Act, that has a hook here, written it to some healthcare workers. And the cab didn't come.
Really?
After forty minutes, so they, I get to call them, Health Act, I would pick them up, but that, just the ones, that's the first time I ever had to do that. So I just, the question popped in my mind, do you have sufficient coverage?
Well, if they call one cab and they don't go, they should, you know, call another one.
Yeah, but these.
We never give up with all lots, unless we're over town, that's it.
These are, these are from outside the country, outside of North America, so they probably live on, comfortable, didn't want to do it, so. But that's the only concern I have, is we limit the amount of taxis, as long as we get the coverage.
The cars are still, the drivers.
The drivers.
Yeah, everybody's still there in place, and they're losing one, so.
But I also think.
Prices everywhere else is getting crazy.
I also think it should be not open, it should be reviewed. You know, maybe at a real old time. Laura, you, you do that once a year, two years, or? When, when you renew taxi licenses.
Every year.
Every year. Yeah. I just think government can involve the business, because we all know that, and said, but, yeah, I, I, I understand why, you know, you could. Anyway, I think I saw today, I'm thinking, who has a white van? Anybody?
Uh, Jason.
Okay.
Yeah, he has a new driver, I seen that.
Yeah, so, uh, I said, there's nobody in the field there. I didn't, I just saw a flash up front of myself, yeah, so he was lost, I guess.
Well, he's a new driver, like, say he's from another country, and he don't, he don't know all, like I said, merch at a party. You know, where mostly cabs travel and show you some ropes and. I don't think he's gonna.
Not according to Dickie Talks, if he's up there, then went into a field. Trying to find the passenger. So what are your comments on this? Because we have to take, make a motion to take this to council.
Well, I mean, I have to take it, let's get that up there.
Well, right now, like, I've never seen a summer, I've been driving nine years, and I haven't seen a summer like this. I did fender last winter, and I have all spring and summer. Like, it, it's. We, we're losing one cab, which is great. I mean, he retired, lights off, he's banned now. And we have, well, this gentleman took over, no cab.
I took no cab, we have a car.
And, uh, he has a couple of drivers that work for him. So he don't drive himself, but he has two drivers. And I have a wife, I have Bob, who drives my swap, Bob. I don't know if he's gonna be driving much longer, I just have some help, which is, or otherwise you would have been here tonight too.
I, I, I went online, Google, you know, and there are some jurisdictions that do limit the amount of cabs, Ubers, buses.
You know, I also understand, I heard through the grapevine, uh, first part of the week, that there's two more applications to, has come in. Beyond, they begin to, two more cabs.
There's not enough here to get.
Like, we're sorry, right now, like, we. Five years ago, there was four cabs in this town, and we kept going, even with work, right, really, all day and all night, we kept going. We could do well with five right now, but it's, it's getting tough. I mean, if any more come in, I must just sell my curves and do it, can't do it.
No, the, the other side of the story is that the free market works, I guess, but it's not good for you individually, no. What are your thoughts?
So that, that involves if we go forward, that involves changing our bylaw.
Yeah, so it's a process that we have to do. And we have to change our bylaw, it discusses taxi cabs, and we'd have to, with some kind of wording there, that it's limited to max, and that becomes a public process too. Yeah. Yeah.
Most generally, most of the drivers, their cab, or whatever. Say Jerry, they're gonna call, another call, we could, they would call, say, my cab, for instance, or we could call. Hason Taxi.
Sure, yeah, you, everybody's, yeah, it's, it works together.
Yeah.
That way nobody's left there. So how many, how many cars will be on in one day? Um, well, five for sure, um, sometimes seven.
Every day, right now. That's a lot.
You set two hours, not me at all, or three hours. All of us, we're all, we're all pointing at our, all of us.
We have a discussion? So we've got this request before, so, uh, we either don't agree to it, or we agree to it, and then we have to test the processor, rewrite our bylaw. It has to take time, so. And this has to be a council, which is two weeks, and then the other process.
No, no, you're not gonna get, yeah, that part, yeah.
Writing, rewriting them, well, I guess, you know, Laura Lee and I both have done a little bit of research on it, but we don't wanna. Go too far into deep into doing the research, get councils on the, what, so basically, we're looking for, from staff, wanna do is direction. Council wants to. Amend the bylaw, limit taxi cab licenses, or a couple of these things. That gives us directions, so if you do that, there's no council. The direction to staff, yeah, we can do it from here. I, I would like to, I don't know if you can word it such a fashion that it does get reviewed at the end of the year, like, suddenly we get a thousand people, extra people in town, and we. Two of your extra cabs, we don't tie ourselves with our own bylaw, then we have to go through and change it again.
Yeah.
So, and, yeah.
The bylaw can handle the policy attached to it, or, or, like, if every two years review or something, or?
Yeah, if you, where it is, as such, in, in the bylaw. In like certain things, I think that's, uh, always the thing, our.
Could be, yeah, two percent of the population.
And there is some.
If it goes below the minimum four companies, obviously, you need three companies, but four, you have to change something really quick to open it up again.
So, I guess, in, in the research that I've done, and I found one that didn't, didn't limit companies, they limited the number of cabs, right? So the thing is, I guess what I'm trying to get my head around to, and I'm, is. If you have five companies or four companies, and there's no limit on cabs, if you have thirty five, five cabs, if you all wanted to do that, right? Right?
Oh, we're gonna have a limit on cab, that cab company should have a limit on the curbs.
But we need the flexibility to respond quickly, instead of, we need thirty five curves.
Yeah.
If not, we're really doing this later on, so I guess, we give directions to staff to start looking at how to, how to make that work for you, folks, but be flexible enough. Respond. So you have six cab companies?
Thirty five, yeah.
Five, yeah, yeah, he retired, so, yeah, he just retired.
Yep. His name was the forty third, but he, he's done now, he's probably his cab laid off.
We got five companies and not any cabs.
For cars? Five, six, seven, seven cars.
Well, one stuck in field, that's it.
I have a dirt car.
Yeah. Eleven cabs, that seems sufficient for a town of two thousand. I, I know you're running inside the area, but.
Like you say, we already, like myself, with the two cabs I got, two cars. If I'm gonna go to Hallifiles, I'll either leave my wife, or my other driver here in town. Always someone here. And my cab don't do the vacuum up. Something. And you say we all try to. Work together, certainly, these, these advice.
Well, yeah, if you walk, if you lay into the.
They all work together.
You bet.
Well, you bet, yeah.
They all work together, you have.
This type of business.
That gets reputation, can't get bad, but, so.
Yeah, we have to watch, uh.
Can't get bad, I don't like it. Yeah.
I know, I've always wondered where we're headed with the cost of fuel, power, and shit. The CDC, in other words, this, this is the most, well, just general population, the most expensive time in history in life, uh. It would be a year to, the world crisis had to come down, but such a short.
Well, right now, I do curbs.
Yeah.
They're just, they all be, you know, be careful for commercial, six of them. Plus your, plus your, your brakes, your tires, your oil changes every month. Whatever, you know, everything, it's, it's all figured out.
Last time I toured taxis, seventy hundred dollars a year. That was that two to a year ago, so.
Why play it?
You won.
Why play that? They used to reset the tires a year. Because a set of summer tires won't last from spring until fall. So I gotta put an elbow set off, and then work on the winter area. More tires.
Yeah, it's costly. So we'll give direction to staff now, work on that? That's all you need tonight, just directions, start, we have to, it's not just a decision we can make.
Oh, I understand.
He has to draft a bylaw, then it's backward discussion, and then there's a advertising process and all that. So this is very early in the. Okay, well, we'll get to the work.
Right on, yeah, I agree with you, brothers.
Yeah, we'll get to that. It adds enough, you're on, you'll get noticed to have a convo.
Back to you again.
Yeah, see you. Uh, so last, correspondence, draft asset retirement obligation policy. Time to twister.
So you probably remember quite a while ago, we started the work on asset retirement obligations, um. Primarily an accounting exercise, uh, although it's having a pretty big ramifications with all of the municipalities, it's a public, new public sector. With someplace, and it began, or those years began April one, twenty twenty two, and forward. Interestingly enough, Nova Scotia is the only province where the municipalities have a fiscal year equal to March, and all the others have a calendar year, fiscal year. Uh, so we're, we're the only ones going through it right now, so we are, we are the leaders, we are the first, nobody else is doing it, we're gonna follow our lead, whatever we come up with. So it's, it's, uh, for you in this, just letting you know that it's pushing things so bad that the financial information account, the province gives out every year for us to complete. Still not available template for them, because they can't decide on how to deal with asset retirement obligations.
Or what color they use, or what color they use.
What under he was, yeah. So I, I did talk to them, talked to them on the phone, and, uh, I just always want to reiterate, at this point in time, there is no effect on tax rates. This is a capital fund, large liability, potentially good to go there, we don't have one that we calculated. But if you did have one, every year you would have to put, uh, you have to book an entry, to recognize the expense, uh. As you get closer and closer to that liability having to be realized, say it's thirty years old, you're gonna retire the building, and you get rid of the asbestos, and it possibly evolves, well. As you get closer, it's got a thirty year period, and a bigger and bigger number you should have set aside. So, uh, so some places, uh, uh, will have to start thinking of that, but there's no obligation right now for us to sit that on the assets. I asked the municipal affairs, uh, have they talked about it, and have they confirmed that they're not gonna, uh, enforce any obligation? And they said, well, it has come up in discussion, but nothing so far, so that's all I can tell them. But we don't, the only thing we have so far, it's gonna be booked in our financial savings, we have an obligation to retire wells. Uh, wells are only around seven thousand dollars each, I think, to, to decommission, and, uh, we're thinking, at the earliest, it's gonna be fifty years from now before we have to touch them. So our liability is pretty small, and our transfer station, there will be, um, uh, Department of Fire rules that transfer stations, when they're at, when they're done. Have to decommission them, you need to get the plan, or you're gonna decommission them, so we'll have the plan of the people gathered under that. Whatever the plan may be, as long as they agree, then, then, then you're, then you're fine, but, uh, nothing that we should be particularly worried about, but it is a, it is a big one. So this policy, um, doesn't have to be passed as a result of, uh, the new standard, but it's certainly good practice, and this policy. Outlines the basics of what happens with an asset to retirement obligation. Both the liability, um, you see the first definition there, it's accretion expense, we need accounting term, every year, there's gonna be an expense in the books, and that is the. Increase in the liability due to the passion of time, so we're ten years old, containing somebody a million dollars right now, say your liability is really only nine hundred thousand, you stick that in the rest. As you get closer, your liability's gonna increase, that increase each year is accretion expense. So it gets complicated, but again, for our purposes, for the council's purposes, all just an accounting exercise, and reflected on the capital. And when we do have new rules come in, say from Nova Scotia and wire, we will have to recognize liabilities, when we say, build another, uh, uh, transfer station, or. Built a, we built underground oil tanks, they do have to decommission, you have to, you have to book liability. So, so this policy is, uh, uh. One that the number of municipalities are using, like, modified a little bit, um, just to reflect our, our situation, and, uh. Having said that, if you have more, if there's any questions about it. I know it's all, it's the same thing we've done tonight.
I'm just trying to tell you, I have another, we got to start booking all this up.
Um, I don't see it having, uh, much of an effect on the consolidated financial statements, uh, if you're a very small municipal. Have a large building, the multimillion dollar.
I was just gonna tell you, I'm leaving, I'm just crossing the line.
Then potentially that liability could be large enough to, uh, to make a valuation either split or split.
Any questions or comments on that?
Anything else you'd like to add for you?
Uh, no. Not that, uh, not that we've been made aware of, um. Ask as many questions as we can, and. If, if other people find that in the future we have to book it, we, we would, we'd book it, but as far as we know, um, right now, uh. There's no, nothing on the book saying thou shalt, uh, building this way, or that is the old, the old, the extreme plan when you're, when you're done.
That's our backup. Yeah, just like the case, backup pump, you're not, if, if we have a problem with the horse name, going to SFSco, or the pump station that's down. And we have a place to collect.
So it's a whole new.
So we got a whole new thought. All the machinery, or majority of the machinery itself, is that a?
As you yourself, uh, it's actually an improved operate, we have to have that as a backup, and we have been twice since I've been here. Once was my first year, and we had the biggest range we've ever seen, and it was so untrained, we actually rolled from the end of that, instead of over plan. Then we had the pump family this year, which actually filled it, so that's, the service is purpose, even though it's a big hole in the ground, but. Save the, the disaster from all that stuff.
So you ask us in the office?
Uh, yeah, did, uh, did we counsel them, uh, the, the, uh, to, uh, to move?
Well, we can move it to council for approval, but in the meantime, questions come up. Uh, so we have a couple of things to ask, and I think that's.
Does the council?
Yeah. Okay. Make a motion?
Make a motion to ask the climate obligation policy to.
Counsel, okay, deputy mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? So if you want exciting reading, take this home again, read it again. I read the big word draft.
Read the title, I thought it was titled Tom.
Well, that's what I said to Tom, exactly, I said, that's not really, it's a Tom. Yeah, the whole policy on Tom. Next one, housing accelerator fun action plan, so this is part of the, well, part of the whole bunch of the C M A C, fun, that media has sent in all various women I heard. And, uh, the Prime Minister stood up at the F C M, said, get your applications in. You'll get money, but of course, he's just the Prime Minister, he's up in Europe, that's. Comments, questions, new comments, helps, has it been working with them?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Seen the note you're doing?
Basically, in order to. For the application, we need the action plan, right, so the action plan was. Well, at least it meant to this one, and technically, it was supposed to have an approval, the council, of council before it ends. But we ran out of time, so we, that's why I sent it, everybody, moving on, everybody, to see whether there's anything left standing, and, uh, so, um. Application is a, based on this plan, and this is the most recent bodies playing, and that's part of the application, so there's. Four or five initiatives.
Can we shorten the timeline, twenty twenty six to twenty twenty five? I know it's possible, but. Timelines are. Oh, here, the, the, uh. Buildings, yeah, I know that's impossible, but I just listened to the news, I care, they says they need to build one point five million housing units, and collectively across the country, it's.
Five million.
Huh?
Five point eight million.
Yeah, five point eight million, that, there's a deficit right now.
Two million of those being taxi units?
Yeah.
Three point eight million.
Yeah, where are the, these workers? Oh, they break them in, break them in. So, I did read through this, now, I can't question the comments, what's everybody else's thoughts on it? No, we should have a motion, or a motion to accept it, I was gonna, but
uh, this would be a recommendation to cal, to, to council, and, uh, in the application, if you didn't have one, if you, uh, the option, you say, you expect to take the council's, uh, the action plan, so I did put, uh, September eighth, which is the best council.
And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume, I don't know what's written up, that this can be fluid enough if things change all these months and year that we can, but there's a lot of things in, in this that if you get the funding, if you get the accepted, a lot of it is around land use planning, and so we're gonna be in, some of, uh, in a review, and things, and some of the initiatives in here do require some changes, but some of them are things that we've already discussed that we're gonna change, but we can get grant funding, how pay for consultants to do it, right? That's, we can use that money to pay, uh, precious feed for work, and things like that, too.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna say, I emailed Tom, because I wasn't quite sure of all this, and I didn't understand the different amounts for everything, I actually asked, is this for the units, or what is it for? And they clarified, this is for the plans, like, and what Tom just said, in terms of, uh, their municipal, or town strategies for stuff, so it's a little kind of a toss on that side, wouldn't be great if it was per unit, if it was structures up, but, uh, couldn't be that, that good.
Well, there is some, or you can set up a program, if those are set up, a program for, um, given subsidies, or whatever, to developers, and say, we want you to develop in your proposal, right? If, like the Victoria Street, that we could say to them, if you'll consider unaffordable housing, like five important Ohio units, we are at work, ready to give you X number of dollars per unit, subsidize it.
It would be perfect, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is such a, this is a part priority, but it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And wouldn't throw it on staff, because you'd have to look at this whole time.
Yeah.
Well, staff, um, a lot, yeah, I know, it's a lot.
We did that, done a lot of work, and
Yeah.
To be perfectly one, if it hadn't been for new problems, they had, picking the, uh, picking the initiative, and basically, saying, yes, we'll, we'll do it. Best thing is, is that they, to them, from charges.
Somewhere along the way, they'll, they'll rip their own, so.
Yeah, uh, because of the, because the Siesta Lintal project is in our action plan, so, so to speak, so that's where they see that we're from the back end, they'll see that project, get somewhere, move it, so.
Yeah, that's, 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 we're asking you.
There's one motion to get this council.
Yeah, definitely, a fourth group, shall I say? Council, so, any, council, any other discussion on it? All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes, uh?
Save yourself, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's frustrating, but I, I don't know.
Yeah. Almost twenty twenty five, we're probably, we're twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, we gotta quit camera, so, thank you, guys. See you in some time.
Yes.
Right? Make a motion to quit camera, last thing on the agenda? Most of our German? Okay?
Yeah.
All of us in favor, go home?
It's my favorite.